I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that we remain standing for a moment of silence for Rosemary Hazel, passed away recently, valued town employee and wife of the former principal of Clinton High School. Thank you. We will call the meeting to order here in this candlelit setting. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here under these conditions. I'd like to start with, this is the February 25th meeting of the Clinton School Committee. Can we start with a motion to approve the bills?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of February 11th?
I'll make them. Second.
Thank you, motion being made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes from February 11th? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you. Do we have a student rep tonight?
Is that the basketball guy?
He is, yes, and good luck. Good luck to the Gills.
We've had some successes this season that we'll get the full update on in the next one, I know they're working on that.
Outstanding.
We want to recognize all those athletes for their team and individual accomplishments.
Great, great, terrific. PTA? Okay. CPAC? Anything from the CTA tonight? Thank you. Any public comment tonight? Thank you, as always, we are happy to revisit it after the meeting or near the conclusion if we need to. So, you're here for our celebrations and most of you are here for our celebrations and we're thrilled that you're here. So, we'll start with the Clinton Elementary School?
I think, I don't think that student has arrived yet, so just to give a few extra minutes, we'll start with the middle school.
Mrs. Sargent, Mr. Sead?
And our CHS student is also at the basketball.
Okay.
We will, we will recognize her at either the next meeting or we'll wait till the next celebrations.
A worthy place to be.
So the Clinton Middle School tonight is here to congratulate Larissa Ilha, and she's an eighth grade student who has been one of the first members of Project Lead the Way, and from what I hear, has been a tremendous help where she is continuing into the second term with Project Lead the Way and assisting Mrs. DeSessa. And with that, she was also a big part of the Legos League, being the only eighth grader on the team, and she definitely mentored the younger students. She had a lot of patience and she did an outstanding job. And observations that we have made with her in the classrooms, Larissa speaks dual language and she is the first person without being asked to assist any and all students when she sees that they're struggling. She just has this sense and she makes her way over the air and she's the first one there to help however she can. And we just brought in a new teacher in technology and the new teacher said that she's been such a great help down in the technology area, kind of showing her around, helping her get organized. We're just so very proud, there's so many things that we could say about Larissa and you would never know it because if she was walking down the hall, she's very quiet and to herself. Would you agree, Larissa?
Yes.
Yes, and I want to thank the eighth grade teachers, but more importantly, Mrs. DeSessa for being a big part of recommending Larissa. So we want to recommend her to you and congratulate her.
Outstanding.
And then I think actually you're gonna, you're gonna stay, we're gonna do the, we'll do the
Yes.
Employee of the Month.
So it's our privilege from the Clinton Middle School, it's such an honor to recommend Mrs. Mendoza for Employee of the Month. Mr. Sead and I have been talking, I think, for the last hour and a half just of all the things that she does for the Clinton Middle School, but she's the face of the middle school. When you come into the building, she greets you, she's the first one there. There's no job that she will say no to. She's a big help for us when we have new students coming into the building that do not speak English and she takes the time to sit, greet them, and work with the families to get them registered and feeling really comfortable about their first day at school, getting them situated with riding the bus, assisting with fundraisers that we do at Clinton Middle School and being part of the PBIS team and organizing things for us. We have a big day coming up this Friday, Dr. Seuss Read Across America Day, that she has offered to assist us with and we're just so happy and honored to have her as our administrative assistant and the first person that you greet at Clinton Middle School. So congratulations and we're just very
All right, I believe our elementary student has arrived.
All right.
So I want to introduce everybody to Aloa de Souza. Aloa is in fourth grade in the Clinton Elementary School and she's a part of our ESL population. She came to the United States from a small farm community in Brazil when she was in grade one and spoke no English whatsoever. She is now here and I happened to have an opportunity to interview Aloa earlier today, asking her what her greatest achievement here is and what are her best classes. She loves mathematics, is one of her best classes, and I looked at her MCAS scores and she's already passed both of her MCAS as a third grade. So that talks about the dedication of her family, I want to say thank you to it, I want to say that she works extremely hard. She's been a light in the school, we really enjoy having her, she's full of energy. Her best teacher she tells us at this time is Mrs. Plump. She had Mrs. Plump in grade one, was introduced to her, and then she had her again in grade three. So Mrs. Plump sat her twice and she was nominated by Mr. Oberle, Mr. Oberle was doing a graduate class and had an opportunity to interview Aloa. And from that interview, I was so amazed and happy that we decided that she would be our nominee for Student of the Month. We want to say thank you very much for everybody here, congratulate her on all of her hard work and everything she does and thank her family and everybody else in all the schools. So that is your
Congratulations.
Oh, you're not shy, come on, I know that.
Thank you for helping Mr. Oberle pass his graduate.
So as always, each month, clearly the very best part of our meetings, with the exception, of course, tonight, we actually have a presentation with some architects and we're looking forward to that. That said, if you were here for the employee and student of the month presentations, we won't be offended if you choose to take some pictures and get home to some power.
Maybe, maybe. Or stay here and enjoy heat, whatever you want.
Yes, yep, you're welcome to stay, but we're not offended if you choose not to.
Yep, so as you mentioned, we have a presentation tonight. As you know, we've been having the feasibility study being done on the old fire station and so are joined tonight by DRA architects. We also have Mr. Duffy's here as well, has been a large part of Driving Forces Project and helping to secure the plan to get this project going. So they came prepared for not having full power, so they brought some old-school slides for us.
Thank you for accommodating us tonight. Can you see that, Mr. Norris?
So we'll turn it over to you guys.
Well, thanks. We all set with this?
I'll take that as a yes.
Good evening.
Oh, do they need a, should they hold a mic or anything or that? There could be too much. Just give that one? Does it work for you or not?
Just try, just try talking, see what we pick up on.
Tess, Tess?
Just try without the mic. We're, we'll pick up.
All right, yep, let's go. We'll get going now.
Good evening, my name's Jim Barrett, I am principal with Drumar Roseanne Anderson. We've had the pleasure of working here in Clinton for the last several months, taking a look at the existing firehouse facility as a possible proposed STEM center. Along with me this evening, Greg Smalley, our project manager, John Tindall Gibson, our need to have a chance to share some of the information with you this evening. You see Mr. Duffy here, I don't know, Phil, any introductory words along the way here?
I want you to re-claim the committee and the audience with the gist of this project. We've been working under a grant from the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development to retain DRA and also the Mass Hire, the Central Mass Workforce Investment Board, to develop, to see whether the idea of implementing community resource, a STEM center, which is basically used to be, as a community resource, is principally used to be applied to public schools, check viability of that relative to program and the condition of the building specifically. And DRA is here to make a presentation on program, building, but
Thanks, Phil. Phil was kind enough to give me a heads-up this afternoon, letting me know that possibly no power, so we've reverted to the boards. Hopefully they're, they'll be large enough for you to view, but if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me along the way. This first slide, you know, speaks to the location of the STEM center, just off of Main Street here in church. This is the existing firehouse facility, directly adjacent, as you know, the elementary school, just down the roadway here to the high school and the middle school, but directly across the street, adult learning, you know, major manufacturers within town, micro, and other potential partners within the community, where some of the ideas explored as thinking about the facility and the potential users for it. This is an aerial view moment of the church, or excuse me, of the fire station, Turm Street across the top here, Main Street down the side, as I mentioned, the existing Clinton Elementary School facility adjacent, fire station off to the side of it, about a three-minute drive to the high school and middle school site here from that location in town. So as we looked at the existing facility, some key issues that came into play, first, dealing with the beautiful historic structure, really an icon here within the community, thinking about it as repurposed use, how do we take this facility that served the community so well for so many years as a fire station, thinking about it as some other form of use within the community? And then lastly, STEM education, how well can it be integrated into this type of space? Given that we've had some open-based spacing, Greg will touch on it later as we share some photos, it's wonderful space and we feel certainly easily adapted to this type of use. So this is the overall project schedule that we identified, pretty short hit, September through the end of the year to meet the guidelines. And in this, not wanting to go line by line, I'm certain at your distance, unable to read it, but it's basically significant steps that I wanted to identify. The first step, project initiation, the second step, information collection and evaluation, the third step, concept development, and then lastly, the fourth step, opinion of probable cost, developing cost estimations for the work through that timeframe. And so with that, I'll take it to that first step, project initiation, let our project manager, Greg Smalley, touch base a bit on some of the work within that.
Good evening, as Jim said, I'm Greg Smalley, I was project manager on the project. Take a quick walk through the building, I don't know if you've been through it and had the privilege to meander through. Lower level, nice solid foundation, good slab, relatively low ceiling height, but still usable for some storage, access to it a little bit limited, and the lighting and whatnot still in need of a full rebuild, but good bones, nice, nice solid building, it seems to be standing up quite well on its own. The street level, getting up closer to the eleven and a half, twelve, thirteen-foot ceiling heights, the ceilings and all the trim still remain incredibly intact for a building of this era, good bays, nice clear, opening front-to-back, good load capacity, obviously we were talking about fire trucks in there before, we can get a STEM program in there. And it has a nice feel to it in terms of the wholeness of the project, the wholeness of the building still, even with the change from horse-drawn to mechanized engines, when they took down the stalls at the back, you can see the change from the white brick to the red brick is where the use inside the building changed. It still maintained its integrity as a design, though it was quite attractive to work with overall. Second floor, for some reason, we took more pictures out of the, out of the windows just because of the views and the connection back to the community. The second floor, once again, the layout of it is quite usable for it, we think that most of it can be cleared out and turned into larger spaces to replicate the lower level, which we'll show you in some of the proof of concept, but the connection to the outside, the ability to let people know what's happening inside the building and have that connection to the community as a whole, we thought was quite special. And then finally, the real fun part, the upper level, access via one of the best staircases ever built, it was called the ladder. But quite a neat space when all is said and done, it's a trust system that's hanging the second floor through those truss rods and pieces over here, the two large boards and pieces of lumber on the floor are where we took out the demising wall for the structure on the first floor for the, to increase that bay for the apparatus. So the structural engineers have been through the building, think it's quite sound and pretty easy to work with, to do what we want to do with it. In effect, we're reducing the loading on all the floors by going to a STEM center away from the fire department. That said, it has need for full mechanical systems, electrical plumbing, the whole nine yards, it's left essentially as a fairly good shell the way it is. So we went from understanding the building at the same time, trying to bring along the concept of what STEM learning is. It's been prevalent pretty much since the age boom has come along, this project-based learning, STEM learning, started to get a little bit more formalized in the seventies and it's been going through all the way through to today. So nineteen seventy-two to two thousand and eighteen, the players have stayed the same that the games are playing and what they're playing with have changed quite a bit. It's still a very appealing way for students to connect with their teachers and to connect with one another. We're seeing a lot more in STEM learning in small group, ten to twelve people working on a project, similar to your, your first program here with the computer pieces and the robotics tying together a lot of different programs with kids with different interests. We think that's one of the real key pieces to a successful STEM project, is to engage in every level of the, of the interest of the child. And here, once again, STEM learning doesn't stay just at the elementary or high school level, it's coming all the way across into community college and up into adult learning. The idea behind this program was to, or this effort here with Clinton was to program for every age group that might come into effect or might come in to use the building, and John will talk a little bit about that program that we went through. So we finished up the informational collecting at about the same time we were setting into programming and starting to understand how the building might work and who might be influential in that, and I'll have John come up and talk a bit about that now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. So it really is a beautiful, beautiful building. I talked to the fire chief and he said it just, it broke their hearts to have to give that building up. When we do a project for you, we want to listen to what it is you need and we want to make sure we understand that very clearly. So to do that, first of all, I'm just going to share with you a very concise statement that was in the press about this project. It said that this space would be a public-private collaboration and would serve as a venue for project-based learning for youth readiness and skills training for local community and a space that will foster creativity, innovation, and entrepreneurial skills. The town would work together with the school district, which owns the building, and other community stakeholders to create a sustainable organizational model of a maker space if that project pursued. So our mission then is to see if this building will work for its intended use. We talked to quite a number of people about town, we started with a planning committee meeting, and at the meeting, there were a couple of school board members, there were a couple of officials from town, superintendent was there, Mr. Duffy was there, a number of other people, and we talked about what the thinking had been to date, the history of the evolution of the idea at that point, and it was decided at that meeting that we should do a public forum, we actually like to do that, and we did three. We did them all on veteran's day, one at seven in the morning, one at noon, and one at six o'clock in the evening, and there were a number of people, a nice representation of private citizens as well as people from different organizations that came to that. And we took notes, we talked to them about the ideas, we had a number of slides and photos that we showed them, and we listened very carefully to what their needs are and what they thought it should be. And what we'd like to do is show you some maker spaces or some STEM centers that we are familiar with, so that you can just get an idea of what is being done currently in maker spaces and in schools in, around, around the region. This is Foreman School, it's a private school in Connecticut, and you see, this is what they call their Ingenuity Lab, and there are quite a variety of things going on in there. This is their teacher, these are a couple of students who are working there the day that we went through, one was working on fishing lures, is that related to some curriculum that they were involved in? There, here's a dollhouse that somebody was, was working on, quite a number of things. It's a very simple space, as you can see, it's a hard floor, you can see the table is adjustable height, it has wheels, so there's a lot of flexibility. Same, same space, you can see a 3D printer, laser cutter, and those are common pieces of equipment that you find in a, in a STEM center or a maker space. Here's another area in that same Ingenuity Lab where you can see they're fitted for robotics and doing that there, which is nothing new here in Clinton. This is Ms. Porter's school, it's another private school. This STEM space is actually divided into two spaces, so there's like a dirty space, sawdust or machine dust or whatever, and then a clean space with computers for designing and planning and doing research and that sort of thing. This is a community meeting that we had, you might recognize, this is your library here, and we had, this was sponsored by Mass Hire, and we had some private companies represented there, as well as micro and Mass Health and so on. This is Blackstone Valley, they're doing something similar, it's called the Education Hub. Theirs is a little bit more probably career and vocat oriented than maker space. We went there and had a look at that. And these are some design elements that you would find in a, in a STEM lab or maker space. The furniture usually is a very light actual furniture that can be moved around so that the spaces can be organized in different ways. Typical equipment, as we discussed, lathes, cutters, 3D printers, and so on. So then, as we think about all of this equipment and the different kinds of things that people want to have happen in a STEM center, we have to think about how all that is going to be organized and how the spaces will work in the building that you have, and Greg can talk about some design concepts.
Thanks, John. So we get through all of our thinking and talking and end up with that bubble diagram there that John is taking off, that's a way for us to communicate both internally and with, with your group as to how, what pieces need to fit next to one another, how like they relate relative to size, and we start to turn that into some party drawings here. So this is the actual firehouse party drawings, lower level, predominantly for, for storage, the yellow is circulation on each one of the floors, the blue gives us the maker space, fab space, whatever we might want to call it, gray, the darker gray is outdoor space, and then some collaboration space, office space, support space. What we liked about the building is its flexibility, the fact that it's not a column in a girder type of building, but rather hung with the, with the steel trusses, gives us a little, the wooden steel trusses, gives it a part of their flexibility on those intervening floors. So we then went ahead and developed four different options, trying to figure out how best to maximize the program versus the dollars that might need to be invested into the space that we have. The first three all anticipate in addition to the building, the last one is working just inside the building itself. For ease of presenting, we did the ground floor for each one, and the lower floor, second floor, third floor are off to the left, so we can look through those in a little bit more detail. And our first option, it was this idea of a covered connection over to the elementary school and toilets outside of the building off to the right if you're looking at it from the front, that gave us the majority of the floor space inside, about twenty-eight hundred square feet on the ground floor, that would be open for use. We do by code need two stairs and we need an elevator in order to access the second floor. Stay on the ground floor and you're just about compliant, pretty close to being able to use just the ground floor. So that would give you eighteen hundred square feet with no other connection and no, no real weight to expand. The trick with these type of buildings is really to be thinking about what your ultimate build-out might be, so ultimately you want to use the upper floors, plan for the elevator, plan for the steps, plan for the egress, those are all the pieces that drive the floor plan, then size equipment to take care of the extra floors in case you then bring them online, you're not that fitting equipment backwards into the building. So our first step at that was a relatively simple connection over to the elementary So our first step at that was a relatively simple connection over to the elementary school to expand the learning opportunities. Option two took in addition out the back side of the building and covered the connection to the elementary school. That moved toilets and stairs inside the addition and gave us room to expand further back. This starts to impact the chiller for the elementary school. So we have some residual costs that need to be considered as we go forward. And these floor plans are essentially interchangeable. What you do on each floor isn't impacted by structure. So if you like this first floor with the second floor of another option, you can put those two together and your only real driver is circulation. And finally, a third floor, slightly bigger, toilets, kitchen, lobby, this is looking at a more community-centric type of build-out, covered connection over to the elementary school, and still a little bit more room for future addition, but it brings us up to a bit more building space right from the first start. And then option four was the typically the default, we have to stay completely inside the building. So in this case, the area gets a, is a little bit smaller, we need two toilets only on each floor. So we give two toilets, stair in the back, stair in the front corner, elevator in the back. It brought us from about twenty-eight-hundred square feet of floor space that we can work with to about twenty-two-hundred, twenty-three-hundred, so we picked up, lost about five hundred square feet between the two because of the toilets, bathrooms, and stairs. And on that floor, we get all of the wide open space that we had before and the ability to expand out in the future, but you avoid the need to change out your chiller for the elementary school and any of the connections to the elementary school is off of that notch.
The next piece that we'd like to talk to you about is opinion of probable cost, which is the fourth step in this, I think. The fourth step in that series of steps within the process. What we were able to do, once we went through the first few steps of the process, we're able to collect enough information that we could share with a cost estimator, a construction cost estimator, able to help us identify opinion of probable cost for the four options that were identified. What this basically touches on is the idea that the costs, as they're assembled, represent total project costs. So really, what the overall comparative number is, it's an order of magnitude cost that allows you to look at scheme to scheme, an order of magnitude cost of comparative value. Construction costs are identified, equipment costs are identified, project development costs are identified, other miscellaneous costs are made part of that, and then ultimately a total project cost number. I believe these were within the booklets that you had received. That is the description of the breakdown, which is within each of them. And what we've done is provide a kind of a side-by-side comparison of the four options. So option one is Greg had described, basically with Center Street out here, excuse me, church here, the addition off to the side of the building, so some presence to that street. Existing building at about twelve thousand seven hundred total square feet, the proposed addition at about forty-one hundred, sixteen thousand eight hundred total square feet. It does have the covered connector to the elementary school, as was touched on by Greg. In terms of construction cost number, it was at about six million dollars, total project cost number at about eight point two. Option two and option three each moved to the back of the building. In terms of the breakdowns, they're about, well, option two is about equivalent with option one in terms of overall sizing. Construction cost number at six point two million, total project cost at eight point three million. Option three, as I said, similar to option two, a bit more construction to the back, seven million as a construction number, nine point four as a total project cost number. Option four, which as Greg described, looking to contain within the existing walls of the facility. This option was not described in the booklets as they were offered, but what it looks at is the existing square feet of twelve thousand seven hundred square feet with no new construction added to the facility, also no connector to the existing elementary school. With that, construction cost number at about four point six million, total project at six million dollars. As we said, what these represent is for study purposes, test-fit information for each of the four alternatives. One thing we'd like to emphasize is that as you look at these, although they look like architectural floor plan, they're really meant to be, to serve as a test fit. There's really not a significant design effort in it other than to be able to say that amount of space which would make sense in terms of support of the program can fit within this area. It does give us the opportunity to share that information with a cost estimator and they're able to help us develop these types of cost estimates. At this juncture, certainly, these numbers are very fluid. We haven't delved in deep to be able to home to any significant degree, work with the cost estimator to look at other options and alternatives for cost savings, et cetera, but this information gives us at least a point of departure in terms of what each of the options contain and what order of magnitudes are available for cost centers. So with that, that's the total package of information that we wanted to bring to you this evening. Happy to entertain any questions. Greg, John, and I can answer questions around ideas of how the various plans were formulated, educational planning and programming questions through John, or any others that you may have this evening.
Well, I want to start by saying thank you very much for this thorough presentation, incorporating a lot of the aspects that we've been talking about and sort of bringing them to one particular, several visions of what it could be. And so we'll open it to the committee for any questions you may have.
I have a question on option four. So is the second staircase now within the existing structure in option four?
Yes.
Okay.
The elements that are needed to support an idea of multiple, you know, the various floors, once we get to this use group,
Yeah.
We will need two stairs, we will need an elevator,
Right.
The vertical pin,
Yeah.
And we will need additional toilet core space. Each of those are held across the back wall within the footprint of the building.
Gotcha.
It yields slightly smaller spaces, yet they seem adequate for the activities that are anticipated at each floor level.
Okay. Could the second stairwell be a fire escape?
No.
That's just against the
The total require an enclosed stair tower.
Gotcha, okay.
Other questions?
I get a million, but I figured.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. I figured you had a lot of questions, I'm not going to ask any.
No, I mean, the, so Wendy, because we had option, we had three options, and I appreciate you guys putting together an option four, because I know, I'm just speaking for myself, but I, just a little bit of sticker shock from the original, you know, the prices, but understand. The, so I had a couple other questions regarding the, I noticed there was a big difference in the number, the way the restrooms were laid out and like the amount of like stalls and everything between the options. There was a lot of variety. Is that just like you guys presenting different options, or is there any, like, what's the requirement for, what's the minimum requirement for like for restrooms for a location like that?
The minimal requirements are those expressed, option four, option one show kind of the lesser amounts. And option three is probably the one where we have the greatest amount of square footage dedicated to that type of support space.
Right.
Much of that speaks to the possibility of the types of uses that may come to the building. Multiple user groups, after-hours use, adult use, so on and so forth. So that was some of the thinking, you know, as that was put together. As Greg touched on, the elementary school has a chiller directly behind the building. And really, some of what option two was exploring was how close to it can we get without trying to disrupt it, although I don't think it was successful in the test. So ultimately, it comes into consideration in each of these, but that was part of the reason for trying to skinny down as much as possible the elements with that option two.
And in option two, is that, that's the one where there was consideration for like a chiller for the elementary school?
In option two, within the booklet,
Yeah.
There were option two, A, B, C,
Correct.
D, there were four total. And what we have identified here for the side-by-side comparison, in each option, in options one, two, and three, we did have the connection to the elementary school. So there's consistency across the board as you compared them side by side by side. As it speaks to the issue of the HVAC equipment, we did not include the additional elementary school HVAC equipment requirements in option two or three, so that again, these three could be considered apples to apples.
Right, okay.
Option four is the outlier in that it simply says, how do we minimize as much as possible so it stays within the constraints of the existing footprint? It does handle the HVAC requirements for that building,
Right.
But it does not have the connector relevant as the other three do.
So the HVAC for the elementary school only came into play if the connector was involved?
In options two and three, as we build to the back of the building,
Okay.
That's where the HVAC equipment at the elementary school came into play.
Okay, so the only thing I was struggling with was I, because I understood the connector, but I just, I wasn't quite seeing like why, if we were connected to the elementary school, what was the purpose of having like a, it was discussing HVAC for the elementary school? And I
In options two and three, because we're building to the back of the existing building.
Okay.
That's where they're located right now.
That is where they are located.
Okay.
So that's why there was
So we just
Those cost centers in the various options.
Replace them with
Yeah, replace them with newer ones.
Something new, okay.
And they're, you know, and you're replacing whatever they are now, eighteen year olds.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense now, I just, I couldn't, couldn't wrap my head around that.
And I'll pass this down the table. This is the existing fire station facility shaded here, you'll see it's a rectangular bar across the back.
Okay.
That is the HVAC chiller that's on the ground that
Understood.
That does serve the existing elementary school.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Pass that down so you can see it.
Right, so we're just saying if we were going to have to build in there, we might as well, if we're going to build in the back, we're going to have to rip that out.
Rip that out and put it in one end.
So in your experience with these kinds of projects, and I think I understand through both the book and your presentation tonight, that, that the options that you've laid out allow for the STEM STEAM center to continue to build out, or in this case, up, correct? And that the construction costs are really about getting the building ready to be what we want it to be, as that vision continues to evolve as a community center, as a, you know, the dirty lab that you mentioned, the clean lab, the design lab, that kind of thing. But, but in terms of the total project cost, that would be pretty fluid depending on the direction that we decided to go.
Yes, but as Greg touched on, when we're speaking about the new stair tower, the elevator core, or the HVAC equipment that serves this building,
Right.
Or the electrical service that serves this building, it makes a lot of sense to bring it in at capacity that could serve all four floors. Similarly, the elevator, they would bring it in so it has access to all four floors and key it off if in fact the upper floor wasn't used.
Right, so the prudent thing to do in a project such as this is to absorb those costs regardless of
Absolutely.
The very humane of going, because it's cheaper to do it right now.
Our experience, it becomes significantly more expensive to say, putting in three stops of an elevator with the idea that you're going to attempt to add it in the future.
So Mr. Bates and Mr. Barrett, the town has had experience in doing that in very recent past, we did the elementary senior center, about two million dollars five years ago. We put in a four-stop elevator, we used the basement as storage and to provide fully measures, the third floor, which has a main kit, the mechanical systems were not, the mechanical systems were not properly up to the fourth floor, we brought a panel up to the fourth floor so that, well, it would be much less than we need in this way, conjecture. But that infrastructure put in place to anticipate future development at a time when it was least expensive to install, would eventually be expected.
That's a great point, you know, the kind of sifting through the various decision points of how much do we put in the running of the major kind of cabling to it, the setting of a main panel, might be the limit that you decide is necessary to get to a place where it's left for future development as you think about the third floor. But certainly, that investment right now makes a lot of sense in terms of the effort that's under, that would be underway in bringing the building back online.
Other questions?
I had a question, I thought option two, that the, I thought it was, the base construction price was five point seven million.
Yes, so what I used for purposes of option two was actually the two A,
Gotcha, okay.
That's in your booklet. The reason why I did not use the first was that it did not carry the connector to the existing elementary school, and that's a choice that could be made.
Right.
But to keep it an apples-to-apples comparison to what was offered in option one, we felt that showing option two was the way to fairly compare it, and that was similarly done in three.
Sure.
Carry three A as the basis of these numbers.
Right, because before option four, I think option two, the base option two was the cheapest.
Yes, yes.
And it was the, it was slightly smaller square footage, but, but yeah, but seeing option four now, you know, having everything inside obviously takes a lot off of the, off of the price, not having to put that addition onto the side of the building.
But what's worse off with option four is the ability to add in the future as the program continues to grow and finds new ways to sustain itself. The programming, as we did it, came up to between forty-five hundred and five thousand square feet of floor space for the program itself. Option four gives you just about that on those two floors, open space, not with bathrooms or anything else. So that would give you what we, that pretty much determined would be the minimal amount to meet the program as identified through our work and get you up and rocking is option four. And then to expand, you can go via option one out with a street presence, but not to the elementary school, or two or three out behind it. But you have the ability to think about that in the future, get the program working. It might be that you need smaller incubator stairs. The STEM world may evolve a little bit to space that isn't necessarily anticipated here, but option four gives you the ability to build to.
Other questions?
So I'd say, at this point, could you explain what normally the next kind of phases would be that we would, that you would typically see in a project moving forward?
I'm going to take a half-step and then I'll let Jim talk about the next step. What I propose we do is put option four in the final report. So that you're not surmising what option four might be.
Sure, yep.
So we can do that since we haven't printed the final report for you yet, put that in, send that back up. And then, but Phil's, you still have a few comments for me, and any other comments? And any other comments that might come out of this, we'll incorporate those, put option four in, then I think that brings us to the point where we are tonight in terms of what's in print and what's in words.
And I, I do in my backpack, and I'll bring it to you all, and have them, uh, in a similar format that was shared in the booklet for the three, this, this format, I have a single page for option four that I can share with the table for your record. In terms of next steps, this is a conclusion of a, a study process, one where the key elements are observation of existing conditions. Does it have the bones to be able to carry the program that's being asked for? In our analysis of the building, we certainly feel that this structure can manage, or our structural engineer has identified that the building certainly can manage what's being asked of it as it moves forward. As Greg touched on earlier, the structure of the building is one which is, it's open base space. It was needed to be that when apparatus was within the bays. Now it's just wonderful open space that doesn't have the encumbrances of columns or any other type of structural wall within the opening of the building. So it's very adaptable and very usable for this type of very flexible space. So that was another consideration. Another component that we strove to make part of the study was understanding a program statement, exactly how much of what types of spaces might be necessary to support the envisioned programs. And as we think of the, these programs, we, we come to it with a full understanding of this type of space has to be extraordinarily flexible, because what's happening today may be very different in a year from now, or eighteen months from now certainly. One of the real wonderful pieces about this building is when we think about flexible space, our educational planners and programmers tell us all the time, flexibility comes with storage. The lower level of this building, which has lower head heights, and it's not really great for accommodation of occupied space, although it could be occupiable space, would be wonderful storage area. And with the inclusion of an elevator that goes throughout all four floors, makes it very accessible, so that movement of materials up into spaces when it's needed, and then being able to get it out of the way so others can come in and use the very same space is another advantage of this type of facility. So those were some of the elements of the study as we brought it forward. The opinion of probable cost, always an important component, and we will continue to refine that as we move forward. Next steps would be thinking about if one of these options or another idea comes forward in terms of that being a direction to move in. At that time, it would be good to be able to then have a subset study that looks at just that option and begins to ask the questions more specifically. What are the actual program elements being brought to it? What are the cost centers for the various fit-outs necessary in a more specific way? An opportunity to look at the option from the standpoint of thinking about opportunities for developing cost centers where you might have a variety, you know, low, medium, high level ranges, where you start thinking about, well, we can move in on day one with this, you know, setup or this assumptions with the idea that we can grow into other levels. So it's, it's all that work that would be typically seen as a next step. Focus on one of the, in this case, we have four, but there may be others that people may be conjuring up as we, as we think about this collectively. Land on a particular direction, be able to dig in a little bit further to understand more specifically cost centers, issues around programming and planning, construction issues that might, you know, elevate. And with that, then be in a very good position to be able to say, we know with much more certainty what the cost center is for this investment and what the deliverable will be to the community.
Join us up with a couple more. At any point in this process, will we know, get definitive numbers on what the load capacity is? Because I know the architect report, and you guys both kind of mentioned that, just visually, it looks like for what we're asking out of the, out of the location, it should be able to support anything. But at any point, do, do, does work get done that says definitively, like, your max capacity for this floor and that floor is X?
The only piece that helped us back with defining that for the upper floor was we didn't want to destroy any of the walls.
Gotcha.
That's where the tension rods are.
Okay.
Once we can see those, then we can know what the tension rods are holding for the second floor, and if those intermediate walls are actually helping to support the third floor. So it would be part of this next step, we can move into destructive investigation.
Okay, all right. And the only last one I had, and this might be me not understanding, being the best with like electrical circuits and stuff, but in the electrical systems, it said eight hundred amp, two oh eight, one twenty volt, and I, just, do we need, and Paul, this might be a question for you, for some of the equipment that we're thinking in there, does that meet, does that meet the needs that... Okay, because I was just thinking, I didn't see anything for, for like two forty, and I just...
Oh, no, that, that'll carry.
That'll carry two forty? I just, I know, I, I see two oh eight, two oh eight, one twenty, and...
Two forty, two forty, one twenty.
Yeah.
Mister Mom.
And we're off to the races.
So, yeah, that, that was my only question, and that's, again, that's just me not totally understanding how like the electrical, you know, how they're rated and stuff like that, so that, I just didn't see two forty anywhere, and I just figured some of the equipment would probably run that, but...
It, it may be that two forty's not provided at the street.
Okay.
So that's talking about service and not what, not what you would do for transformers or transformers. But how we came to that load, just so, so we know, is we took the, all the building loads that were calculated to run the largest of the buildings, then we took all of the loads that would be on the highest level of equipment that was suggested by the subcontractor. Put those together, gave it to the electrical engineers to get us into the right range.
Okay.
So, and it may be the two oh eights out in the streets, or two oh eights is what's at the panel, that you have to charge up, go up or down with a transformer, make it all over.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, and everybody in the audience, our apologies for the shifting, but we do have this electronically. We'd be happy to share it as a PowerPoint presentation at some time in the future, if that's helpful. Certainly easier to read when projected at a much larger size. Thank you very much, thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
Exciting. Dr. Meyer.
All right, so first, I guess, you know, I knew that was, uh, obviously, we saw a new option tonight in that presentation than we have before. So I think, you know, we still gotta think about, you know, as we get the final report and start thinking about as a committee, you know, what the next steps we want to take moving forward. And I'd like to talk to, talk to Phil as well about sort of some of his perspective on, on what we have going. I'd say at some point, we, one of our next steps would be probably to talk as a committee, looking at all four options.
Sure.
And also maybe talking to, to you.
If I can just wrap up on the present...
Please.
Um, what we just witnessed today was an excellent demonstration of effectively a proof of concept. Basically, they were asked to test the building against the program. And the returns are that the building has adapted to the proposed use. The next questions are, as we move forward, are, you know, leaving aside costs for just a second. There's the, the question of the value of this model of instruction and learning, potential value that's included in public schools, whether, whether you as a committee and we as a district, we should raise that and understand what kind of investments we need to be made to provide for that either here or in some other venue. There are some advantages in this venue, particularly if we've contemplated it as a community resource. In terms of proof of concept, that said, there's still a world to be done in terms of understanding how each of those schematic designs would affect the operation of, of the facility, particularly with regards to students and, and the general public who are in it. For instance, where you come into the building makes a big difference in how you control circulation through the building. We talked about second day buses in the building, have different groups of users, that's an important question. Where those, where that vital vertical core goes will, you know, affect the, the square footage of, that's available for you to continue to use on each floor. We didn't really give the second floor plan, the architec mix and match over the first floor plan, but really, you know, how those work, does it, it make a difference? In the next phase, you would look at, well, we put the floor here on the outside, we have two big rooms. We put it inside, we have two smaller rooms or one big room. Does that work, since we do these different things? There's also the question of phasing, because we use the, we use the building and contemplating it additional, I think, really, I think once we do it, probably we do it for the future. So I guess I would ask you guys to, 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 as we consider moving forward, to contemplate, again, the, this idea as, as opposed to making part of the experience for students. And with, and see if we wanted, and identify resolve to move forward, identify the right cost and the right budget, and prepare and be able to execute.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
All right, we're gonna move on. So, uh, the first, first gen item under superintendent's report is a retirement letter. So I received this letter, dated February twenty-fifth, we received it earlier. Dear Dr. Meyer, is with bittersweet feelings I write to you to announce my retirement from the Clinton Public Schools. After almost forty years and many exciting positions stretching from New York City Public Schools to Clinton Public Schools, I have decided that it's time for me to retire. My retirement will take effect at the end of the year. I want you to know how much I have enjoyed working with the students, families, and staff at the Clinton Public Schools. It's truly been a home for me for the last eight years. I hope I've made a difference in the lives of the people of the town of Clinton as much as they've made a difference in my life, and I know I will never forget the friends and families I met here. My best to you and the staff and faculty of the district for a long and successful future. God bless you all. Sincerely, Kathy Buchanan. Just like the last one of those I read, there's really a way to follow those up, but...
I'm off of our journey, but we did the last one.
Yeah, that's what we did last time.
Thank you, Buchanan, for everything, your commitment to the district and to the learners especially, and, and your advocacy for them. It does not go unnoticed, the support and, and the, the structure that you've made for all learners in the Clinton Public Schools, and we thank you for that.
Okay, um, community outreach was the, uh, the, uh, sorry, should be community engagement, was the, was the strategic, uh... Goal plan, area we were looking at, the goal. So a couple of things I just put on there. We do have a Title I meeting in district report cards, we sent those out. I know I, I had some difficulty with my links on those, and I took a couple of tries, but we got them.
They get up there.
Uh, so we had the, uh, so we distributed the district report cards. I did not give you, you have a copy of the letter here that shows you kind of where these are available, a copy of the letters. I did not print out the report cards for you, because the, the new report cards are very, uh, interactive almost, you know, you kind of, you click on it, it kind of opens up, and then you can see things, and you can click on another thing to see how it compares to the state or those types of things. So they are kind of, they did encourage the electronic distribution of them this year, so we did send them out and gave email to all the families. We are also holding a Title I meeting, I believe it was in the letter, for March thirteenth, so that we can look at our, things like our parent compact and our Title I programming and those types of things moving forward. And if you, if you go to the, in the community engagement section, one of the actions was, you know, continuing expanding 3D partnerships within the school district and developing the Title I parent involvement policy and, and school parent compact at each site. So kind of trying to start doing, addressing that goal with the, with that meeting on the thirteenth. The first, very first action was the welcoming environment, creating the district environment committee. So that committee has been formed. They did, we have had one meeting so far, it was the, uh, it was in January. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, so Wednesday will be the twenty-seventh, will be our next meeting. I think we really got some good, uh, good information, I think, um, you know, I tried to prepare sort of a draft survey for that meeting, and I really focused, I think, a lot on, on communication, and there were a lot of perspectives that other people brought to the table about other aspects of making a welcoming environment that I almost didn't even really consider when I put together the survey. So we've been sharing some thoughts on email, and we'll try to come up with a next draft of the survey hopefully on Wednesday, and hopefully be able to get that out soon. And then I'm hoping that, just like we were working on the athletic survey, and if we can get the district environment, welcoming environment survey, that we can try to, you know, kind of market those together as a, as a, you know, try to engage the community and gather that, that feedback. So as far, I mean, those are probably the two major ones that I have as far as updates in the, in the community engagement one. The, the only one I'd say like provide opportunities and experiences towards student civic engagement, obviously they did change the, uh, there was a new law passed, we do have to do more of the civics and, and increase all those. So we're working on that within our, right now looking at within our history curriculum, we'll make sure we're, we're providing those experiences in the, to do it in the eighth grade and in high school.
Goes into effect for next school year, the, the law that was passed?
Yeah, I think, um, it's either, it's either this school year or next school year, but I know we'll, we'll perfect it by next school year. But I mean, some of it, you can kind of say like, are you meeting the bare minimum of the law by doing the mock, if the eighth graders are doing mock town meeting, does that cover the bare minimum of the law? Probably. But we're gonna look to really kind of, you know, meet the, the spirit of the law. That should be things we're working on for next year. So that's pretty much, you know, the, the main update on that, unless anyone has any other major questions or concerns. I just put in here mass partnerships for diversity in education. It was, there was a training that I went to last week, it was not much of a training, more of a conference, on just looking at how we can develop a more diverse educational workforce. And when you really look at, you know, in Massachusetts, that the, if you look at the diversity of the student body and you look at the diversity of the educators, there's, they don't really match, right? So looking at how we can try to, you know, promote people going into the education field, and how we can try to attract, you know, educators of, of color to kind of come to your system. They mentioned, the commissioner was there, spoke about, you know, really some of the research that shows that if you can just have, if students see at least one, if they have access with at least one teacher that they can identify with, you know, as their, their, their race or their national origin, they're gonna be much more successful in school, having that sort of, that role model. So I think that's something that we want to try to, try to work on, or, you know, keep in mind is that we want to make sure that we're providing those, those role models to meet the needs of all of our, all of our students. And then that being said, the, the last thing I kind of have here is the, the principal search. I did put some thoughts down here, so there's a kind of a quick timeline. We did post the job on February, I think it was actually February fourteenth, the end. You know, I did put a, a job description, it was a fairly lengthy one, that was kind of a tweet from a fellow district, to be kind of comprehensive. I think I did put on there that it was basically a working draft subject to final approval, so we can, we can always tailor if we wanted to, but most, you know, most people are gonna be applying for a principal job, or they're gonna, they're gonna be aware of the, what the job entails. So we did, I did want to get that posted right away, I figured once we had the, once we knew, giving that extra week over February vacation, so that applicants could apply. Screening committee, I've started to look at, you know, some thoughts on who might, that screening may be comprised of, you know, we tried to make sure that we've covered most of the key stakeholders there, so if there's anyone that I, you know, you, you see in that... So if there's anyone that I, you know, you see in that list that you feel is not represented that should be, you know, feel free to reach out. And obviously, we did look at including one school community member on the screening committee. So I think we're still gonna need to, at some point in the near future, identify probably one, one member of the committee to be on the human resource committee at least and one, search committee and one to be on the principal screening committee. So, so the process obviously has been posted. We did include a required question with the posting, so all students, all applicants have to give basically their vision statement for Clinton High School as part of the application process. Get the screening committee up and running on the 18th, starting with the confidentiality agreement, walk them through sort of a process on how to, you know, rank candidates and look at criteria, working on drafting questions and coming up with the preliminary interview dates. Committee can send the rankings to the chair, the chair can compile them, but meet again to select candidates, interview, sort of some date ranges there to try to get some, some first interviews done. And then, so the goal will be hopefully to offer the position of someone by, by April 30th on this timeline. Obviously, it does give us a little bit of a window. If for some reason the process is dragged out, we're not, we're not scrambling. But we do need to remember particularly if we're getting someone, if someone we're gonna come who is maybe currently in contract in another school district or anything, we're gonna need some time for someone to look at breaking a contract. So, so we have, you know, we have that going on. So that's kind of the, the timeline. We did enclose the, the principal position posting. You can even see in there, we said, you know, Clinton Public Schools welcomes applications from a broad range of diverse candidates and strives to recruit and retain staff members that reflect the diversity of our student population. That, that was a statement that they recommend putting on, you know, right at that diversity gathering event. You know, they basically said, you know, people look for those statements to see if it's a, you know, a setting that they want to be part of. So we made sure we had that into there. And like I said, a lot of this, a lot of the, you know, responsibilities and things are things that have come from other existing principal job descriptions. And I just tried to kind of tweak them and tailor them for our, our needs. So I think that's sort of the update on the, on the principal process. You know, the posting has been up. I'd say that there are, there are applicants at this point, so, and I won't get, I won't get too much into that. So I think unless there's any other questions on that, that pretty much wraps up my, my report.
So I guess I would ask the, the board members to let me know if you have an interest in serving on the screening committee for this position or the screening committee for the HR position. We need to have at least a representative, we need to have a representative for each of those positions. That's correct.
Yeah. And I think there's possibility, I'll confirm with Mike, there's possibility that could be two for the HR position, because I think it was two for facilities, but we want to at least, I don't know. So if you're interested and you want to let, if they let you know and then we can, we can form it up, because we got a little bit of, you know, neither one encloses till March 15th, so.
Great, okay. Great. Any questions on either the posting, the process, or I guess anything that's for Dr. Meyer? Nope. All right. Do we have any reports from our advisory committees?
Quick, quick turnaround since the last meeting with the vacation. I don't think we had an opportunity to meet.
Yeah. No. No, I don't have anything from.
Okay. Do we have anything on our old business?
The only thing under old business, we did mention talking about potentially looking at start times for the meetings. We might add that as an agenda item, but if that was something that the committee wanted to do moving forward, we could, you know, I think we could discuss that here under old business.
Would any of you like to put that on the table? Does seven o'clock serve our purposes? Would we like to move it up?
I'm fine if we move it to six thirty, but I really don't care enough to make a motion about it. You would support one, but you're not gonna instigate it. I'm not spearheading this initiative.
Is, is there any reason, is, is there any reason to, I guess, not consider moving it up? I mean, I, I, you know, seven o'clock, we have our community celebrations. I don't think we keep parents or kids here necessarily too late. I don't know that, you know, whether seven works or we'd be better served trying to move it up and then have that much more time if we need to go later. I don't know the history of the committee well enough to know if it's been seven o'clock since time began. And, and I don't know if that's a, if that's a good enough reason to keep it that way.
Are all the other town meetings seven o'clock? The selectmen at seven?
Yes. Select, the selectmen are seven.
Okay. Not all board meetings are seven.
No.
So doesn't sound like there's much interest in.
I don't hear one word of it. Yeah. Somebody brought it up sometime, I don't know.
I think, I think we were all here early last meeting and it seemed like a great idea because we were sitting there going, boy, why are we, why are we just waiting until seven o'clock?
I, I do think that there's, there's merit in considering it, but, but if there isn't enough energy and, you know, we certainly don't want to mess with the programming because our view in public. We don't want to, we don't want to lose the viewership that we have, certainly.
I do think though, for when we have special events that take place before school committee that maybe we start saying for our meetings to take place immediately after.
Right, immediately following. So like if we post tri council at 5:30, we'll say school committee to immediately following. Yeah. So we don't have that law.
Okay. All right. What else?
There's a couple of things. Steve, we mentioned that last meeting, at least I had about doing a walkthrough, you know, kind of video walkthrough. I honestly would do, right after we talked about that, the weather turned lousy, like school break, so, and now it's lousy again. So I'll just email you and mine was the ground, so, you know, there's a time when, I don't care if you want to go or Russ wants to go, just kind of play it by you with the weather type of bill. So yeah, just, yeah, right after we talked about it, they got covered in snow. And do you, I know we talked about the mixed negotiations. Anything on that, you just made.
No, I know that, so there was a meeting that took place over the break. It had been meeting, we were supposed to have a meeting on Friday before break, that got postponed again by the attorneys. So it was a meeting over break that I was unable to attend, but it does sound like it was a meeting with our, the town attorney, Mike Ward, Louie Russ was at the meeting, and the attorney from the union, the, the HSMI attorney. So it does seem to be my understanding that they were amicable to moving forward with kind of the, the, kind of the new bargaining unit as, as we have been talking about, because it would still be within the same unit, it would just be the same union, just one different bargaining unit. So that's my understanding where we are right now. I haven't got a lot more details, I haven't been able to, I haven't connected with Mike yet since, since I've been back, but we'll kind of, we'll keep you posted because I'm gonna have to, and I'm gonna have to reply to them too, because we're gonna need to start, you know, like we said, regardless of what happens with the facilities, custodial portion of that union, there's still the, the secretarial portion of that union that we need to, we still need to negotiate a success or agreement.
Thanks.
Anything else under old business?
Yeah, real quick, Joe, I just want to follow up to that, to the presentation that we heard earlier today. I just, I think we need to focus on like the amount of money that would just make the building like usable for, for anything. So I mean, obviously, we want to use it for STEM, but like, so looking at option four, which is the cheapest one, that the base cost, what is the cost to make that building functional? Because either way, if we decide to move for, like, we're gonna make a decision even by not deciding to move forward, like what we're kind of saying is, you know, if we don't have the appetite to, to, to try to get the money to make the building useful, then we're kind of saying that we don't want to do anything with it. And then that brings us down another path. Now we look at, you know, are we gonna sell it? You know, what are we gonna do with it? So I, that's, you know, we don't have to have a vote or anything, but I think at some point, we just have to kind of gauge the committee's appetite for this investment. And I think we also need to start pulling the, the town into this. I know they're aware of it, but like, and affordability is of these guys, if the one presentation is all that's in the, the cost, but if they can't do it, then I think like somebody from the school committee should go to a, a selectman and a FinCom meeting, present this to them, and hopefully at that point, maybe we have some of an, an idea of what we want to do. Because I don't think something like this, this magnitude of an investment is going to get done unless the school committee, the selectmen and the finance committee are all on board in one direction. And the other reason it's good to, to have those, those other boards involved is, you know, we don't know what the, the, I know the, the middle school we're looking, Russ is looking at, he's, he's making updates to it, but there's a chance that we may be looking to, depending on Russ's opinion and if we, if we qualify for that, that program that we tried last year, they do a feasibility study, like they may, they may recommend that we have a new middle school. So before we move forward with an investment of four, five million, whatever, for, to make that building functional, it'd be good to know that the selectmen and the finance committee are kind of on board with that big picture with the, if they're on board with the investment for the, for the fire station and they're also on board with the possibility that we may be asking for, for money for the middle school. Because the last thing I want to do is, is push for the money for the, for the fire station and then possibly, you know, kind of expend our political capital than when we have to ask for money for the middle school. So I just think it's, you know, important that we, at some point in the, in the near future, come to a decision on what we think, are we gonna pursue, are we gonna make that building usable or not? And bring those other boards, bring the selectmen and the fin, the finance committee into the discussion, because if we are gonna move forward, we need their buy-in on both that building and to make sure that they're still with us if we need to eventually ask for the money for, for a new, new middle school.
Dr. Meyer and Mr. Duffy, do either of you have thoughts on that aspect of the proposal?
No, I mean, I think it makes perfect sense. I think, and I think what, what you're saying is great in the sense that, you know, you have a couple of different things you're, you're looking into, right? So that building exists, like the, the fire station exists and right now it's not really useful, right? So at some point, we need to make a decision of, are we gonna make that building useful? Or get rid of the building, I guess, you know, one way or the other. The, so we need to make, that's one decision we need to make, but we can't just make that in, in isolation, because, you know, yeah, it would be nice to have this cool STEM center, it'd be nice to be able to do these other things, but that, you know, it's, it's like, you know, buying a luxury item and overlooking your necessities if we do that at the expense of being able to make sure that we're, we're either maintaining, renovating or building a new middle school down the road. So I do think it makes sense kind of how you're, you're talking about, I mean, almost kind of plotting it out, saying, you know, if, if we were gonna get, you know, this type of money for this project in, you know, FY '20, realize that if we get invited in the MSBA program in FY '21, we're gonna be looking for this money for a feasibility study, which then could mean this money in FY '23 for a project.
Yeah.
So, but at least having that all on the table, right? Because like you say, I, I think the point is, we don't want to get to the point where, especially if you get invited into an MSBA program and they're gonna give you a 70% reimbursement, that the town is, is saying, you know, what do you need that? We just gave you, we just gave you $6 million, you know, so. So I think just being upfront about that. And I think that's where it comes down to, you know, the whole, the whole idea is really trying to look at this is how can we make this more of a, a community center as well and trying to look at that aspect of the programming. It just needs to be understood that that's, that's really the goal. And it's not really addressing our, because you could take that $6 million and we could sink that in, you know, Russ could spend $6 million in the middle school in, in three months and, and do it, you know, for the roof and this and that, whatever, so. And that would honestly be, from a day-to-day basis, a much higher priority. You can ask Mr. Sessa. And the ceiling tiles and whatever else you see, so. So there's a lot of things that we need to address in that building as well. And even, you know, and even as Russ was mentioning, like, even if we were gonna look into the MSBA program, that's gonna be five years out. There's immediate needs in that building with like replacing a roof that, that we're gonna need to address anyway, so.
Right.
So it's, it's kind of a balance.
Yep.
In short, I agree. This is, this will be not only expensive resources, but political capital. I think it's all, personally, I think it's all doing, I think it's all desirable, but I think everyone needs to be communicating and clear and, and be in favor of the proposition. Again, we have to understand what is, what is the value proposition of the school district introducing this kind of model education? You guys are more experienced in education than I am. I had experience with this kind of education, I don't have, and I own today, so I'm treating the community as well. But, you know, not, not really selecting the finance committee, but the community of our, and while we've been waiting for this report to be promulgated, this announcement to be done, you know, we've made communication with businesses, the town, other entities, larger entities, larger funding sources, grant programs, but just saying, thinking about this a day or two, not had any previous meaningful conversations with any of the other potential partners and collaborators. Yeah. Again, we understand what the, the sense, sentiment of the school community is, you know, we need to have some conversations with you guys. It is a vision that the, that the students will, my students will, not, not the sole of the.
And, and I think that, you know, it's, it's an opportu, it's, it's a good problem to have in the sense that there's, you know, a forward-thinking plan to look at an innovative approach to an existing space that we have, but to spur innovation in learning. And, and, but I, I would agree with everything that's been said, that, that, you know, we can dream, but we can't bring the dream to any kind of reality without understanding what level of support that, that we would have. So perhaps, you know, we can figure out how to get on the docket for, you know, reaching out to those boards as well and let them know what we're thinking about, whether that's part of our, you know.
Budget presentations or it's a separate medium or whatever.
And I, you know, I guess we'll leave that to you to.
Yeah, I think as we start, you know, as we're kind of starting to really enter budget season now, I can, you know, we can talk to the, you know, I can try to talk to the FinCom and, and Mike and everyone, just kind of get a sense of when, when and how they might like that presented, because I know they're, you know, except, I know we're gonna have a point where we're gonna have to share our, you know, what will be invited to a FinCom meeting to share our budget. Is, is that the time to do it? You know, can we look at something like that?
And I guess, I, one other thing I would say is that, you know, our role is, you know, one of advocacy for supporting the vision that the administrative team has in, in terms of the, the resources available to the school district. So, you know, I, I think if the board would have more questions about, you know, what that could look like in practice, you know, from a, you know, from a day-to-day school type of thing, I, I think that's a little more gray for us. I don't want to speak for everyone, but, but just, you know, where would the STEM center, STEAM center supplement?
Yeah.
If, if not supplant some of the, the work that's done? What does it, what does it, it give us from an educational standpoint that?
And understanding some of the other, almost, you know, operational logistics in terms of, okay, I have middle school kids, I want to get down there, and yeah, it's something I gotta drive, but I've gotta, I've gotta drive them, you know? And, and so, you know, are there ways that maybe we could do something like that? Like are there ways that a midday pre-K bus that's finishing its run can pick up a class of middle schoolers and bring them down there? I don't, you know, like those are things that we can, we can look at, but we just have to, you know, they're just, they're, they're, they're valid concerns and I think that, not concerns, valid questions that I think that we would need to, to explore and we can inform and, and talk about more.
I would only recommend that we do, we don't do this presentation to them as part of the, the budget, that we try to, if possible, give it its own separate like date with the, because, you know, the button is, you know, a hundred line items that we're presenting to, to FinCom. I just don't want it to get buried. I think if it's possible, if we could, if we could meet, just go to a selectman meeting or a FinCom meeting and just kind of solely focus on this for fifteen or twenty minutes at the meeting, just to kind of gauge their, their interest level and answer some questions, I think it would be better to do it like that.
I mean, it would almost be great to have like a joint meeting that. I mean, it would almost be great to have like a joint meeting that almost maybe the facility, you know, the, the, the whole topic is just.
Yeah.
Capital planning for the, for the, for the town and just sort of where we are, you know, and what, what might be the big, big, big projects on, you know? We had those, another district I've been in, we've had, you know, all boards meetings where it's, you know, the FinCom, the selectmen, the, the school committee all in one joint meeting. And that way we all just kind of, you know, can share those things and everyone hears it once.
I think that would be helpful. Okay. Anything else under old business? Anything under new business? Mr. Morrison, I understand we have a blood drive on the 8th? It's before, I think it's before our next, the 9th?
No, it'll be Friday the 8th, I think.
Okay, it's, so it's before our next school committee meeting. Typically the student.
I would really get a Game of Thrones t-shirt. March 8th.
Okay, so March 8th, clear your calendars and, and give blood and let's continue to push Clinton High School forward in the blood drafts. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make gavel.
All those in favor? Thank you. We stand adjourned. I have no gavel tonight.